So I think we've got everything turned around, switched around, and all up to speed. I will officially call the work session agenda for February 26, 2020, to order. Let the minutes reflect that the board is here, minus Mr. Moore, who should be joining us shortly. We also have some distinguished members of our staff and even more distinguished members of the audience. So a couple of housekeeping things, and then we'll get right into it. We do have the February 12, 2020, minutes before us, so would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move it, Mr. Supervisor. Second.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded. I'll ask, is there any questions, changes, updates, or otherwise to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, all of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so I'll thank both Lisa and Sue. I think it was a joint effort on this one, so thank you to both. Our monthly reports are all up to date. The next round will be at our first meeting in March, work session. We have no public hearings, other than what we just had. We do have a guest, for those that may not know, Paul Calucci is part of DeMarco and the DeMarco Group, and the person that has kind of been the point person, manager, overseer, and all around get it all done over at Baytown Plaza. And Mark was kind enough to give us an update and send out some information to the board, and I see that he's also handed some materials out as well. So I'm going to ask that Mark, maybe give us a couple additional words, and then we'll move on for discussion.
Yeah, the packet in front of you is the same materials that Paul Calucci had provided yesterday. I emailed those out, and I tried to give a brief background, some, obviously, some new board members spent a little time. For other board members, this property has evolved over a number of years, but as we get into the conversation about the wall, that was originally a condition of the rezoning by this board back in 2012? Thank you. Like, 2009, we kind of started some of the process in 2012 that was a condition. Actually, I've got the resolution in front of me. It's in the earlier papers. So we have the conditions here, so as part of that, there was multifaceted concerns about rezoning land from residential to general business closer to residential property. So many different things we, you know, the board looked at through the secret process, through the DEIS, the FEIS, which are the final environmental impact statements. And some of those had different things. One, obviously, was, I think one was concerned about noise, and they had developed and put the berm behind the property to buffer the noise from the neighbors, also buffer the lights. There was consideration on the height of the berm, to be above the building or any light falls in the area. And then there was another concern about putting up a fence or it ended up being a wall, was more of a security issue. It was concerned about people transitioning from the Walmart property through the Jewelberry neighborhood or behind. So originally, the fence or it turned into a wall, that surely came out of more of an intent for long-term material type than anything else, was basically to protect against having people, you know, going through yards, cutting through, back and forth. So Paul and his team installed portions of the wall, and you can see as you go through the pictures, of the side on the north side directly above the Seaberry Boulevard neighborhood. They added some new wall behind what was the existing Walmart, now the Burlington Coat Factory building, which never had a barrier before, that was a condition. And then they added a berm that went all the way around the property, so flooding or protecting the Jewelberry neighborhood, as well as Guy Grace, and Guy Grace, again, didn't have a buffer before. So some neighbors gained buffers that didn't. And then Jewelberry was kind of that closest focus of where that berm went. So they installed the berm. You can look at the elevations on there, the berm, they had extra materials, the berm actually ended up being taller than what we had required. Some spots, it's, you know, a foot, some spots it's four feet as it goes across, but I believe they've met the intent of the berm height around it. We have not had any concerns, or I've not been aware of any issues with anybody going from the Walmart property through backyards. As you can look at the aerial photos, there is a dense wooded area as well that the board required, a 200-foot buffer of no development. And you had another 100 feet of space, the berm, and then it went another 100 feet to the building, or to those properties. So I can let Paul share a little bit more on his end, but just trying to give this board a little background on it. So there was conditions to that effect. So, you know, we've been holding DeMarco's money as part of it, until we can kind of get this in there, let it be installed for a number of years, let it, see if it's needed or not needed. His letter is dated from 2018. At that time, they were still doing some construction on the Burlington building, the former Walmart. So at that time, deferred decision until that construction was complete, to make sure it's full operation, what's there is there, and, you know, to see if it's really impacted any of the other. So obviously, they're looking to get the money back at this point, or obviously, we're suggesting to reinvest it in the plaza in other locations, landscaping, directional signage, other things that connect to the plaza.
I think that's a great overview. I appreciate that, Mark. You know, there's a lot of familiar faces here that were part of the rezoning and site plan approval. And I think what, when we first gave pause to look at the, really, the sensibility of building the entire wall around the plaza was when we were done constructing the berm, the Walmart building was up, we had started putting up a portion of the wall, and we sat there and we said, geez, you know, if we build this thing all the way around the back, it's really going to look more prison-like than residential and commercial. And we fully understood the conditions relative to noise, hence the berm is in place. The wall was a concrete material to be aesthetically pleasing and to look good, both from a commercial aspect and from the residential aspect. And we installed a portion, and that was the first time I reached out to Jim and Mark and said, geez, you know, before we go and put this whole thing up, maybe we can just guarantee a portion of it. Let's let the Walmart building get developed, let's let them open, let's see how the neighborhood reacts to this, because we think we're all going to regret, us being the developer and the town, if we construct this wall all the way around. It just doesn't seem fitting when you look at the setting of the plaza. And I think there was agreement, and they said, okay, you know, let's hold on to guarantee some of the money, make sure that we're doing the right thing on behalf of the town, and then let's see what we have relative to any impacts to neighbors. And I think it's been very clear that the property values on Jewelberry have not been affected, which were concerns when we were going through the rezoning and part of the DEIS and FEIS. Those properties have sold and have continued to appreciate in value. There isn't, as far as we've been aware as operators, any concerns relative to noise with that neighborhood. No crime that has been reported relative to patrons of Walmart or Baytown Plaza traversing through people's properties. I think it'd be very difficult to make that trip from over a 35-foot berm and through 200 feet of scrub brush. As Mark mentioned, when we first put this idea on the table, he said we'd much rather invest that money in the plaza where it can be experienced by people who frequent the plaza. And we're very pleased with the way that plaza is evolving. We're under construction with a Starbucks right now. We just opened a pet store. We have some other very exciting tenants that we're bringing to the plaza. The marketplace is responding very well to what we're doing there. Some of the things that we talked about was rather invest that in the enhanced pedestrian experience. We redid all the sidewalks on the north side of the plaza. We'd like to do that same redevelopment of the sidewalks on what we call Building G or the south side of the plaza, which runs from the Blood Lab all the way up to Pizza Hut. So that long strip building, we'd like to put the stamped concrete over there, pull the sidewalk out, nice six-foot pedestrian enhancement, so that it's more friendly. We'd like to connect from the Street of Shops, a sidewalk through the center spine of the parking lot over to Building B, so that there's a nice pedestrian connection that's always been envisioned. Continue to enhance the landscape in the plaza, enhanced planters that we've incorporated into the Hardscape. That's where we see the value to the community at large, rather than just putting it on a wall that, quite honestly, we feel this doesn't serve a purpose of any real benefit. So that's respectfully, the request that we have is for consideration, for amendment, for modification of that condition. And, you know, I think Mark did a great job describing, you know, how we got there from the DEIS and FEIS, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or discussion you guys want to have.
So today, Paul, round numbers, about half the wall was installed.
Correct.
If we take a look at kind of around the north end, and a little bit on the south, and, you know, the east, coming around to the east a little bit there, and then the other half opened, as you say, which is predominantly across the top of the berm itself.
That's correct.
As part of some of your thoughts of some of the work within the plaza, was there thought about doing more on the berm itself by way of, you know, some additional plantings, or whether that be, you know, pines, or some other mix of trees, bushes, things like that?
We have considered that, Mr. Supervisor. Again, you know, being so far remote, if we were to put any plantings back there, I don't think they're going to provide any additional buffering or mitigative measure that was so intended to benefit any of those adjacent residences. And, you know, what we found is the trees on the back that have been taken root from what was originally planted, they do okay, they do well, but it's going to be 25, 30 years before they're of any significance. You know, we try to plant eight-foot-tall pines, and they look impressive when they go in, and they're nice and clean, and then, you know, six years later, you look, and they're probably not as fantastic as we all had hoped they might turn out to be. I think the recessional growth that is in that 200-foot of conservation easement that we put in place, you know, rapidly exceeds any benefit that any new landscaping would offer. And I don't, being in the back of the Walmart, I don't think that there's going to be any real benefit to the community or the aesthetics of the plaza. We'd rather invest it, you know, in Baytown Plaza, pedestrian enhancements and other amenities that can, you know, continue to make it a great community asset.
Paul, do you cut, I know you cut immediately behind the strip, behind the actual parking lot, behind Walmart. Do you do a wander mow, or once or twice a year, cut off the bank itself or of the berm itself?
Yeah, Walmart actually maintains their own parcel.
Okay.
That was a condition of their lease. They maintain their, all of their own parcels nationally. They self-perform and all that. But we are very diligent, and we've been in communication with the town when there is any complaints. Our property manager is very diligent in talking with the store manager. They do mow the berm, not on the back side, just because it is, it's basically gone to wild back there, which was the intent.
And so roughly, how often would you say it gets cut on a, you know, between 1st of May and 1st of October-ish?
Probably twice seasonal. The vegetation or the mix of lawn, we'll call it, or-
Grasses and things like that?
Was more of a meadow-type grass was specified for back there, low mow, low maintenance, kind of grows up and leaps over.
And it caught my ear about, you mentioned complaints. How many complaints have we, have you gotten, have we gotten? So I guess that would be a question to the staff.
From the public at large, one or two that I've had filtered through either Mark or Zach, relative to activities sweeping hours.
Okay, so-
If it's a, you know, outside of the property maintenance agreement, which was limited to-
So not so much, not so much the berm itself, condition of the berm, berm itself or anything like that, it's been essentially general operations within the plaza-
Correct.
That falls within the property maintenance component?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, it was Walmart's vendor who, I think, was 10 minutes early sweeping, instead of waiting until 7:00 a.m. So besides that, I don't believe that there's been any real material complaints, other than, you know, occasionally, whether it's our own staff who's policing Walmart, or some of the town staff has sent us some photos just saying, hey, we drove through and we saw this. And that may be a couple over the last four years that Walmart's expanded and gone to their new location.
Okay. And Mark Cos, anything you're aware of, other than a couple times with regards to the property maintenance from a noise, sounds like more of a noise-related item, anything that we're aware of?
No, particularly related to the landscaping of the berm and the berm itself, I don't think we've had a single complaint about that.
I've not heard from anybody, had a concern with, have anybody cutting through there. Obviously, I think that would be, somebody would let us know at the only time. I think we've had two incidences of, you know, the sweeping earlier than what was specified by the code. I contacted, you know, Paul and his associates, they got right on it, and were very responsive to that concern.
Okay. All right, board, questions for Paul and/or staff as it relates to the berm and the wall?
So can I just ask one question on this? I, so I see that this is about three-quarters of the wall, you said, or half the wall may be done in this picture right here?
Yes, well, that's on the north.
On the north side.
So right here, so if you take a look at, actually, if you take a look at this one, the second one in. So the red, the red here, the red here, the second one in.
Yep, right.
So the red, the red is in here on the north, and then kind of on the south and kind of the east of that area there.
I was trying to see where that other part was, on there.
It kind of ends in that back corner.
You kind of can't see it, right?
You know, both ends, they kind of dead end into the berm. The berm goes up higher, the fence, the wall kind of comes into the berm, and then the berm kind of continues to develop.
So if they were, so that's where it would, this is where the part you're talking about, if we were to have a wall, it's still in the same, that same path right here?
Yeah, it would just continue.
That's my question. I just haven't seen that, I didn't see that other corner.
Yeah, it's hard to see in that back corner.
Yes, I understand.
The way it comes around here.
And then probably, note the properties on Guy Grace, which are to the south, those sit much higher than the parking lot. And we actually cleared and put a berm that wasn't required on the plan. We mounted up and created a buffer for those residences. So if we did put the wall in the position as it was shown, it would sit-
They'd sit.
So far below that berm that we did, it would afford nothing. It would basically be up a slope and a wall along the slope.
I understand.
But we ended up creating a nice buffer, I think, for those residents on Guy Grace by taking material and berming it up.
Yeah.
Would you feel more comfortable going to look at it?
No, you know, as a matter of fact, I have looked at this. I should say, I walked out in here this past summer, and one of the things that I was asking on this, there was, no one has any, no one has any issues with anything. I specifically was asking, how's it having a plaza behind there, and you can't see anything? That's what I guess my question was, if anybody's ever said anything that they, you know, wanted a wall.
Not since it's in and established, no.
Yep. That's my, that was what my question was. I had some, no, I do know, and I've looked at it.
So at PRC, did you all discuss it?
We discussed it now for quite a while.
Yeah, Pierce, he's talked about it, you know.
If you think there should be anything beyond, if we don't have a wall, you know, vegetation or anything additional, like Tom was saying.
Within the plaza, yeah. I mean, the money we're holding, we think should be reinvested in the plaza.
That's what you think, as opposed to, so you-
On the berm, I don't think there's any additional vegetation needed, that thick buffer behind, you can't even see the berm, let alone, you know, the wall, you know, from the Jewelberry neighborhood, I've driven through there, and look between houses, and, you know, the vegetation is so dense, you can't even barely see the berm through it. On the Guy Grace side, you know, it was added this additional buffer, a wall was added through that side, which never was there behind the old Walmart, so they're more buffered than they were. And then the wall wraps on the Seaberry side, and then the gentleman that lives right at the corner at Seaberry, and on that corner, he was thrilled about it, and he's been in it many times, and he's, you know, he's been ecstatic with what it was, and the Walmart being there and everything, so.
I like the idea of more amenities within, because it is a huge property of stores and so on. More connectivity would be a safety concern as well.
Connectivity and wayfinding science, you know, they've gotten approval from the zoning board to do wayfinding science, but I think this condition apparently doesn't help him pay for it. In this case, it may be done through their funding.
And also the additional sidewalks, if anybody's been there by Dabellas on that north side.
Yeah.
They bumped the sidewalk out, added some planter boxes, there's an outside seating area for Dabellas, and they added some enhancements to that walkway. And I think spending the money in the plaza to do the south side and to, you know, bump that out, put some stamped concrete, and enhance that, you know, pedestrian experience.
Right.
The successional growth on that berm takeover, it looks a lot like if you're going down through Five Mile, I'm sorry, down through Atlantic Avenue by Bear there, it was just all cattails at one time, not sticking off. The same thing's going to happen there eventually.
So Paul, you talked about, you know, some sidewalks, some planters. Any other landscaping, if, did I miss that, or have you got any other landscaping that you're looking to do, kind of in and around the plaza? If you could just kind of go over that again, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. One of the challenges we have with, with the plaza that I think we're all aware of is the distance back from Empire Boulevard and the depth that the tenants are. Walmart is fine, they're a known anchor tenant with signage. It's the smaller tenants, so we've been very sensitive to the type of landscaping that we want to install. Just putting trees in the middle of the plaza looks very nice, but it hides signs, and tenants freak out about that. And it's very hard for us to lease if we can't afford these tenants an opportunity to be successful. So the type of landscaping that we've been proposing are landscaping in Hardscape in the very large planters that we've put along all the columns. We maintain them, we do typically three plantings a year. There's typically a spring flower, a summer planting, and then a fall planting, and our staff does a great job of kind of maintaining those. We would look to do what we have done along, we'll call it from Dabellas through Gina Marie and Witchcraft and that northern pedestrian walkway. We do that same type of treatment along the south strip building, add the sidewalk, add the stamped concrete, add planters, Hardscape plantings, and some bike racks and benches and stuff that we've done elsewhere. And then a connection right from that Street of Shops, almost, we'd like it to land on the clock tower, but it's going to be just a little off, because that clock tower isn't in the Senate, isn't directly aligned with the Street of Shops, but that pedestrian connection with landscaping. And the type that I would talk about, Mr. Supervisor, would be more shrubs and spring flowers and annual-type flowers, rather than large trees that are going to wind up obscuring the visibility.
Okay.
Are you doing anything with that tent this year? Can you do that again? That's a big piece of property, where you had the tent for the meeting.
That's the second time I've been asked that. I was asked that at the-
The first time was right here last week.
Okay, well, we're talking about amenities and so on, that was something-
Yeah, that, you know, I think that there is definitely plans to try to continue the events, whether we're going to do it in a tent. Again, there's some discussion about potentially doing it undercover in one of the retail spaces that we have, so that we're not so subjected to the elements. So we do like the idea of the farmer's market and the different types of events that we can do to bring it as a community asset and location. Property management kind of oversees that function, along with our, our public relations team, so that's more their, their area of expertise, but I've heard discussions that there's either going to be a continuation of that at that location, or doing something undercover in a, in a space that isn't leased right now.
I was just thinking about amenities, I mean, you talk about connectivity, that we, if you're going to do something more, maybe increase connectivity to the plaza.
Yep.
Okay, other questions, comments for either Paul or staff?
No.
Okay, so the proposal on the table that is before us is that, do we take the current monies that we have in the letter of credit and build the additional 1,320 plus or minus feet of wall to connect the two? Or do we take that money and have that money applied to other amenities to include sidewalks, some, you know, planters, shrubs, bushes, flowers, you know, those types of things across the plaza itself?
But we don't have a plan. If there's not a plan yet, how do you, you know, say, yeah, we're going to transfer the money to do this, but we don't know what this is exactly?
I mean, we haven't released the money yet, and won't until this board is happy. I mean, I think if you tell the applicant, yes, that's in our intent, but come back with a sketch, I'm sure Paul will come back next week with a plan that we can look at, if you'd like it to come back to the board, we can do that. If you want staff and say, as long as staff is happy, we can do it that way as well.
I would say, as long as staff is happy, but I think it's important, yeah.
Sure, Paul's got plans already in place for that, and obviously, you know, we're not releasing the money until, obviously, one, the board is happy with that condition, and two, you know, we know where it's being reinvested and what's going on with the plaza.
I mean, if you're looking for a motion, I would move-
I am looking, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other, as to either build the wall or not build the wall and actually put it, put the monies, the equivalent amount of monies back into the plaza itself.
I would move that we put the monies back into the plaza itself, and that the applicant provide the information about where, what amenities, where they'd be, to the planning department, and I would assume PRC would take a look and make sure they all believe it's-
Yeah.
And then, and then Mark, if you can send that to us.
Of course.
Yeah, we want to see.
Copy the board, you're in the loop on what's going on, and you're aware of improvements that are coming to the plaza.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, questions, comments, or otherwise, either for the applicant or for staff. Okay, so a motion to move forward with putting the money back into the plaza, into the amenities with landscaping, sidewalks, and other types of things, sketches to be reviewed by the board, for the board to be able to take a look at that, and staff to work with the applicant to manage that. All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, we will move on to action items, and our first action item is picking up from two weeks ago, with regards to an RG&E request for utility easement on the Shadow Pines property that would be on the northwest corner up by Atlantic Avenue. And I know that Eric had sent around some information, both for some above ground and some below ground information. I think he was going to actually have, have some broader conversations with our friends from RG&E, Mary Kay, to just confirm, you know, where they were. I think that we'd asked if she would reach out to the property owner to the west. So, Mr. Tate, if you wouldn't mind giving us a rundown, lay of the land.
Thank you. You know, as you mentioned, two weeks ago, Mary Kay Masters with Rochester Gas and Electric, you know, was here as a guest prior to coming in that evening. She had contacted both Mark Valentine and myself in regard- had contacted both Mark Valentine and myself in regards to seeking a potential easement at that northwest corner of the Shadow Pines property with the intent that they would use that location to relocate the existing natural gas regulator station from the southeast corner of Five Mile and Atlantic down the road, in coordination with the New York State Department of Transportation's Intersection Improvement Project. You know, as part of that, the items that I handed out show the kind of approximate location of where, you know, they're looking. You know, they would certainly put together kind of more formal plans and drawings for this. If the board ran, there, on the kind of zoomed in shot, the red line kind of up against the neighbor's driveway is actually the property line itself. Rather than budding it right up tight to their driveway and having, you know, kind of little to no buffer, there are two large mature pine trees that more or less separate kind of the proposed location that they're looking at from that house. One of the options that was discussed at that meeting two weeks ago was kind of putting the structure below ground, which would require, you know, a manhole cover more or less to access all the equipment with two large, you know, vent pipes exposed, those of which could be painted to kind of blend in, especially if they ended up being painted dark or green. You know, they would be easily buffered by those larger pines.
That sounds nice.
So that everybody is aware, if you recall, so this is what that would look like right here, is that there would be a manhole and for the, what I'll call the vault war.
The access panel.
Not a transform, but the access panel for that. And then there would be two pipes that would come up. And I think if I recall, she said they were about six feet tall, round numbers, six inches in diameter. And then the one has a box on it. That's where they come in and do their readings once a week and check things out and what have you. The other note that I had indicated that they do not plan to put in a driveway or parking area, that they would essentially pull up in front here, there's a wide enough shoulder, they'd pull up in front. They'd either replace the card or the scale that they need to read and, because I think they can read it, and then I think it actually also captures the information as well. And then they would replace the disc and then continue to monitor that overall. So I guess the questions that are before us, are we, one, okay with the location, two, our comfort level above ground versus below ground?
I like that below ground, and the true buffer and all that. That sounds like a good proposal.
Tony, I'm sorry, is that the below ground?
This is the below ground. So, there's a coupling here, Andy. So there is another below ground.
That one's actually existing on Five Mile Line Road directly across from Ballman Park.
And then there's also one here, Andy, with the, you know, with the above ground line.
I don't believe there was any other choice for, that was the choice that they wanted, that they were pushing they wanted, correct?
Due to their transmission main, you know, and where it kind of is existing as is, it needs to be more or less on top of that or, you know, be able to tap a tee and put it directly off of that.
So the answer really is, do we want it above ground or do we want it low ground?
Yes.
Really, keep or?
I'm sorry, go ahead. The question more or less is, you know, if the board's willing to grant an easement for RGE to be able to put this on our property. You know, but as part of that, if the board, you know, had feelings one way or another, whether they were going to grant it based on the fact that it had to be above ground or below ground, that's certainly an option that you've got.
I understand.
And this is, if I understand correctly, when she was talking two weeks ago, this is an important main for providing service to the Penfield community. Am I correct in that statement?
That is correct. This will, if not here, somewhere along that general corridor.
Along Atlantic.
But it has to be moved in order to facilitate the intersection improvements at Atlantic and Five Mile Line Road, so.
Do we know if she spoke with the resident that lives right there?
So I spoke to Mary Kay earlier. She's been reaching out to the neighbor. I'm not positive if she's been able to get ahold of them yet. I know I've actually had communication with the neighbor on, you know, in the past about other things and it's, timing wise, it's been a little difficult to get ahold of them. So I'm not fully sure if she has. I also know their communication team was putting something together and reaching out, so I don't know if they, you know, have been in communication either.
Okay.
And so we're 40 feet from their property line and there's a couple of pine trees.
She's looking approximately 40 feet, you know, the pine trees are.
Can remain and.
Yes.
All right, well, if we were to pursue an option of granting the easement, I certainly would support the below ground option. But I do think it's important that we get some verification that RGE has made contact with that resident and at least communicated on where this would go, what the visual would look like, you know, and if there's any additional buffer, arborvitae's or something like that in there. I mean, I'm looking at a Google map picture right now and I can see where those pine trees are, but maybe I'll drive by it tomorrow morning and take another look. But certainly, if additional buffer is needed as far as vegetation goes.
So that was part of my conversation with her earlier. You know, given the size of the trees, my recommendation would not be, or to not require any additional plantings or vegetation as is, but could certainly be, you know, written into the easement that if, you know, at a future point, you know, whether the health of the trees declined or, you know, neighbors contacted us, that we could, you know, require them to add something additional.
Something that looks a little different or something.
I know, you know, as I said, I know, you know, they were, she was working on reaching out to the neighbor. I'm just not sure what correspondence they've had.
She, I believe she mentioned too, when she was here, that she was be willing to, you know, obviously put more arborvitae's and vegetation or whatever we needed around it.
Yep.
So I think she's willing to, that was a plus.
She was. And as I, you know, briefly spoke with Tony, so I guess my concern just with arborvitae's and knowing that, you know, kind of the deer and the wildlife are attracted to them, my concern with putting them right from the start is that if they get eaten, or at least the lower half, they may look a little more unsightly, just kind of given the, you know, the presence of wildlife on that property. So maybe, you know, put it as is, and then if, you know, in the future, something different is determined, we can go.
I'd agree with that.
So I would, board is in agreement, I would entertain a motion to move forward to prepare the paperwork for an easement. That would be submitted to the town attorney for his review. We'd also make it subject to RGE making contact with that neighbor so that they're aware that they see where this is in relationship to their property line and what have you. And then, once all of that has been done and those i's dotted and t's crossed, then we'll prepare a resolution authorizing myself to sign the easement. But we won't do that until all those i's are dotted and t's crossed.
I mean, in favor of painting those?
Yes, yes.
The stacks, okay.
So that they blend in. So I mean.
It's a maintenance issue down the road.
It is a maintenance issue down the road, but what I would also, what I'd also say is, is that that might be something, again, that RGE would speak to that neighbor to say, you know, here are the options. It could be green, it could be brown. I mean, from my perspective, as long as it's not, you know, charshoes, bright yellow, you know, something like that, I think having them have a way or a say in that as well.
Aye.
All right. Would I entertain a motion to move forward as we just highlighted?
I'll move it, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Good move. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion, questions, either for Mark, Eric, or others? Okay. Seeing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to our second action item, development of the apartment building at 1211 Empire Boulevard. And Jim, I'll ask if you would just give the board a quick update since our last get together.
Thank you, Tony. Since our last get together, you'd asked me to contact Justin Dahl to talk a little bit about some of the issues related to the closeness of the buildings and also the possibility of looking at some options in terms of, you know, parking issues, looking at the right of way issues that related to safety coming and going onto Empire Boulevard from, to over Track Road. A couple of things have happened. Number one, since that point in time, Dr. Howitt was informed and got back, and I believe Dr. Howitt and Lori had a meeting this afternoon. I'm not aware of the results, but I'm sure we'll hear in a minute. In the interim, what he did also do was he had Justin Dahl prepare a plan identifying some additional parking for the K-2 Brewery, which you can see on this map over here. He did reconfigure his parking to accommodate the need that he had for the two spaces per unit. In addition, I believe there's about five more spaces for visitor parking if that occurred on the site to accommodate some of the issues the board had. You'll notice there's no definitive change in the right of way anywhere along Empire Boulevard. He does identify the little turn lane as you're entering from Penfield towards the K-2 Brewery and to Wilber Track Road. Thank you. Thank you. So you can see what he's proposing at this point in time, and I'll let him talk about it in more detail. He's proposing to further the asphalt paving area along their entrance and then add, it shows 14 spaces there, but it's actually about 17 or 18 when all said and done with the configuration of the existing parking lot. He's showing, he's showing one little expansion into this area here, which is the residential zone. But it's an area where this could easily be buffered and landscaped to accommodate. And with that, I guess I'd like to let you talk a little bit about the project and your discussions with Lori and what's come out of that, and give the board just a brief update.
There is one other addition that's shown on that design, and that is the addition of a fence between the apartment property and K-2 Brewery. That'll be an impermeable fence. The purpose of the fence is obvious to, one, screen the residents of the apartments from the headlights after dark of certainly the first floor people, and to take care of any concern of the brewery that folks from the apartments might utilize their apparently small numbers of existing spaces and then have direct opportunity to walk in the north-facing door of the apartment property. So it does both of those acts as a screen visually, sound-wise, and from having pedestrian traffic between the two properties. Other than that, I had an opportunity to speak to the K-2 Brewery people today and ask them if they would be interested in having this adjustment. This would, of course, give them an opportunity to utilize some additional parts of my property, and they were, of course, I think, quite in favor of doing that. It took care of a lot of their concerns, if not all of them.
So I guess it comes down to the comfort level the board has with modifications these propose based on our previous conversations, is do you think you should move forward with an application for public review?
Jim, the height of this proposed building is consistent with what we saw when we did the site?
It's the exact same height, yes. It's 55 feet.
Okay.
And you'll notice that they tried to maintain that setback because they want to keep it as close to the slope without encroaching into the slope as possible to kind of keep that from people looking down into it. I looked at that, as you know, I'd looked at it and shifted it down and I, you know, I think it would have created more of an impact. I didn't see, on your plan here, and we can talk about it during the site plan process, I don't want to get too deeply into it, but at this point in time, it doesn't look like there's any parking lighting going in the parking lot, although on your plan, there is a notation for it. So I guess that's something we'd have to look at in more detail as we move forward.
Well, and if there was, that would be dark sky compliant, right?
Exactly. And Jess has done that. He's totally familiar with what we were requiring, so.
It's amazing what you can do with parking lights these days.
Yeah.
Can you just point where that fence, the fence he says now will go?
Yes.
It'll be right there.
So you would not be able to drive onto the property from either direction. You have to go into their property.
You'd have to go into the.
Yes. And again, one of the things that would occur, obviously, is because of the new development, parking along Wilber Track Road would probably not be a feasible thing to do anymore. If anything, I'm sure, it's a private drive, but Dr. Howitt would probably want to put up no parking signs.
But the fence, and then all those parking spots on the side of the fence are going to be able to be used by?
By K-2 Brewery. Yeah, you would access it right here, which is darker, and you would come in and then be able to park. There are parking spaces along in here somewhere, as I remember.
Well, how much additional parking would that?
About 17 spaces, I think.
Is that how many have been on the road, Wilber Track Road?
Oh, I don't know. I just don't know. Lori could probably tell you. She's probably counted them all out night after night. But again, because of, there's nothing on that road at this point in time. Now you've got people living in this area, and I'm sure plowing operations and everything else will be much more intense than they have been to accommodate access.
So there's still parking, there's still parking spots for 120 cars in the?
He's added five more. There were 120 on the old one. There's 125. I counted them this afternoon. He's got 125 on the site now that he's proposing.
Does that include the ones, excuse me, outside the building to the right?
Right here?
Is that additional?
Yes. No, that's part of the 125.
So the plan shows 23 in that area, Jim, that you just served there. And then to the south, there's 102.
Correct.
So that's where the, that's where the 125 is.
Jim, I see. The other issues I think that we discussed was the roadway. If it's all right to segue over to the roadside now for a moment.
Sure, yep.
I think you covered that with us here a little bit. If you could just recap for us, you know, what it would look like, what we'd expect, you know, traveling from either direction.
Well, traveling from Penfield to Runecoy, the middle turn lane would now, it ends back here somewhere, and it looks like they're not expanding it straight through. It looks like it's, there's a, it's been feathered in from point A here down to. Pardon? That's narrowed up. Right, right. So it gives you the ability to come down the road and then get into the middle turn lane, sit there and wait without people coming up behind you, make your left-hand turn into Wilber Track Road. The opposite is true if you're on Wilber Track Road and you want to make a right-hand turn. That's pretty simple because you're just going back out into a driving lane. If you're making a left-hand turn, we're gonna have to look at that as a possibility of getting expanded because you'd want to get them back into a lane with no conflict behind them and then be able to get them out into one of the two driving lanes. That's why when you asked the Danielis to help out, that would be part of that process of getting that done.
We're getting closer.
And as we say, and just so that everybody knows, and anybody, Lori's here too, the town is now looking at creating this land use and access management plan as we did at Route 250 and 441, where if any new development comes in or any expansion of existing development comes in that generates more traffic. comes in that generates more traffic than is currently being generated at those locations, they will help contribute to continuing this lane till we get to at least the end of Penfield's property line or if not further on Empire Boulevard. And the big problem that you run into, Dr. Howitt's offered to do this to try and solve a problem for a neighbor. Many of you know it, and I know Tony knows because it's been around a long time. There's something called excess facilities charge, and at one time, a local community south of here did that. They charged more than what the developer was required to do, and he took that town to court and decisively warned that issue because he did not need to do any more than what the court required for his property. In this case, he's doing more. That's why I would recommend if he moves forward that we do it under an incentive zoning program, because the incentive is providing additional parking and also doing the work out in Empire Boulevard that I'm not sure the DOT would necessarily require him to do at this point in time. That's kind of where we are.
So there are two questions on the table, Board. Question one, do you need any additional information either from staff, from the developer, developer's engineer, for you to make a decision whether or not we move forward with a hearing? So that's the question on the table. Do we need more to schedule a hearing? Or is the board prepared to schedule a hearing and go to a formal public hearing and plan rollout?
I would move that we go to a public hearing, that we've gotten a lot of information. We've been getting a lot of information, as much as, oh, I can't see any more that's necessary except hearing from the public at this point.
Okay.
I would second that. I think the concerns, I know that we discussed, I think there's going to be much as there can be at this point. I think it's an improvement from what we started with.
Okay.
Tony, quick question. If we go to the next step of a public hearing as a part of this process, that still affords us the opportunity to make recommended changes or touch things up a little bit based on, you know, taking another look at the property? Because I certainly plan on driving back down there this weekend again just to take one more look. I just want to know that we've got the ability to do that.
So certainly with a public hearing, what we may hear is from neighbors, adjacent neighbors, or others that traverse through that area. Any questions, concerns, issues that they bring up, I think we'll have the opportunity to vet those out and as part of that, discuss any further changes, updates, modifications to the plan.
Okay.
Certainly. Certainly, I think, you know, this board needs to be comfortable before, you know, we make, you know, any final decision as to what that finally looks like.
Okay.
And that's the whole purpose of the site plan review process, is to, by including what you see initially, you make it a better product.
Okay. So it's been moved, seconded to move forward with a public hearing. Further questions for staff or for the developer? Okay. Seeing none of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Doctor, I'll just ask that you work with staff, Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine, and schedule, you know, the hearing at the appropriate time.
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our third action item this evening. This is the annual sidewalk discussion. It's the February special that we have every year. And the man of the hour is Mr. Valentine to give us the latest and the greatest and the pointer.
I'll wait just to send a map around to the board. I sent this off to you yesterday. Excel spreadsheet, which I sent on Friday. So first, I'll kind of run through slated projects we have for 2020 under our budget and then run through request locations that we have. So on the map, it's color-coded, kind of the ones that are in the, I'm sorry, greenish color are the ones that are slated for this year. So I'll point those out on the map. Washington Hall. So first, we're moving to Empire Boulevard to CBVG funding, so it's the development block grant funding. We have money to go from La Salle Landing Park down to the Oak Orchard Kayak Place. The DOT is still working on the turnoff, so it's not included in part of this plan, but it's slated to be constructed this summer. We have sidewalks also through CBVG funding on Sanders Farm connecting to the Little Pond Neighborhood, Penfield Road, as well as improving the connection between the Crown Estates and Wegmans. There's an asphalt path there now. It really doesn't need ADA requirements. We did a portion of it, saw that we needed to continue that, so we're going to continue that piece in there. As this board previously received the petition for Huntington Meadows, our budget was increased to install that. We've already gone out, done the survey, we've done the design, met with the neighbors. We had a neighborhood walkthrough with all the neighbors there. Everybody was fully supportive of it. We've already removed the trees necessary to get the construction going. We've left the stumps in place right now, just waiting to pull the stumps out, restore the site, go back, dig it up, restore it again. So the stumps have been left once we get in to do the actual sidewalk installation and remove the stumps, install the sidewalks, do a final restoration all at once. And then one last portion is up by the YMCA. There's a connection at the end of that now that the YMCA is in. See much more pedestrian activity in the area. It's ending it, call it hidden hollow, but it was hidden hollow. The sidewalk ends there, past the church, take up to the traffic light, and then there's pet indicators on all four leaves to the light. And then there was some contribution money from the YMCA in that as well, so that's reflected in the spreadsheet with the sidewalk cost. The grant funding that's there is either the CBVG for the first two contributions from the YMCA, some total in there that's just under our allocated budget for this year of $180,000. So that's what we have slated for this year. We have in design. We have permitted. We have Heinz Concrete on bid for that and hope to get started with them April, May, whenever the weather breaks. We'll be one of the first towns out of the box and get our sidewalks installed early this year.
Amen. The only potential item out there hanging is with the state on Empire Boulevard, and we expect they'll have that wrapped up by the time construction season.
I'm hopeful that they're done, and I'm hopeful the high waters don't affect it as well. We've got a piece in La Salle Landing Park, which kind of walk up to the point. We've got proposed, if money isn't allocated there to be, that is a concrete sidewalk that goes out. Just as we've known, it's in the high-water situations, that's underwater. Hopefully, the waters recede a little bit and we'll see the timing of installing that piece, but the piece along Empire Boulevard is outside of that area. That's the piece that goes out.
Okay. All right.
And then I highlighted in pink other areas of most recent requests. I'll start with just in order where they're on there, no particular order. Parkview Drive, we had a request that's on that bend. There's a little bit of a blind curve. There is no other sidewalks on Parkview Drive that people can negotiate the shoulder, the condition that it's in. One area, there's a kind of a blind curve that goes around the edge. As people walk, you know, they've had issues in that area. So we estimated that caused. It's through the town and there aren't any other permits needed from any other agencies. The second location is on Five Mile Line from Embry to Crossbow, so this is at the north end. Excuse me. Sorry, this is at the lower end, so going from, we end at Roethlisbrough Park, continuing up Five Mile Line, connecting into, we've got Crown Point, Wyndham Woods, Development Crossbow Drive. So that's been requested. Over 3,000 feet, so almost two-thirds, three-quarters of a mile of sidewalks there. Obviously, you're almost at a quarter of a million dollars for that cost. Five Mile Line, we had a request to extend the sidewalks past the Watersun Neighborhood up to Rosebud Trail. There's a shorter section connection in there, about 830 feet. Rossbrook Drive, this was the petition that I provided the committee last week off of Panorama and connecting to Aspen Drive. I didn't get clarification from the gentleman that had submitted the petition, that every neighbor on Rossbrook on both sides signed except for one that was not on that side. It was somebody that's not a town rental, so he just, multiple times, rang the doorbell, just never rang into that person or they're out of town with that. But he said every person on Rossbrook signed a petition, every person on the side that wants the sidewalk to sign a petition. So there should be no issues there if the board decides to move ahead with that.
Mark, which side was that? I'm sorry, Rossbrook?
It was on the south side.
South, okay.
Just look at the south side, and then we showed the connection up to Aspen on that. Jackson Road, there's been some renewed interest in Jackson Road. We have not yet received a petition, and I heard that some people may be generating one, but did want to reflect that for the board, given the planning we just had a hearing last week on some potential new development over there. There's some questions, concerns about sidewalks, and so I put that in there. Again, that's almost 4,000 feet of sidewalk going all the way from Jackson Extension all the way down to Whelan. Again, that's almost three-quarters of a million dollars of cost on that. And then the last request we've had recently is on Atlantic Avenue. We've been slowly making our way down Atlantic. We did another little extension piece just to continue off that piece along the Shadow Pines property. That's basically a half a mile from there. Continue that down. So, one, obviously seeing what, you know, what area the board's interest is. Obviously, this past year, the budget was increased quite a bit. Typically, our sidewalk budget is $40,000 with $15,000 for sidewalk repairs is what it's been. The 15 remaining this year, the board opted substantially for Huntington Meadows. Obviously, as we head into budget season, where we see that sidewalk budget, obviously with at $180,000, we can do a lot more if we're going back to $40,000. Obviously, that changes what can be constructed as well, so. Just wanted to share with the board of what we've got. There's blue lines on there as well as you look at the map. Those are sidewalk connections and spaces we've looked at in the past. Most of, if anybody's watching at home and says, "I don't mind," maybe you have other spots that we've looked and had questions, we've left them on there. Obviously, we have more requests than we have funds for every year. We'd love to continue sidewalks and extend them everywhere. It's just obviously, you know, limited funds. This board's policy of having developers install sidewalks across the frontage, on main roads, as well as internal helps, you know, that does leave us gaps. Obviously, as we go back with the town funds and try to fill those gaps in, little by little, we try to spread it around town, do some here, do some there, and each year, try to, you know, continue to fill those gaps in. So one, obviously make sure the board is comfortable with what we have slated for this year, and that's, we're well into design and ready to go with that. Just make sure the board is comfortable with that. And then, obviously, if the board wants a little more soak time on what the requests are and everything else, you know, look to schedule their future meeting or something with the board of where you want to go, what do we anticipate for a budget? Obviously, there's more factors in kind of that future. Then we populate the 2021 and then get started on survey, design, permitting, construction.
So if the board recalls, for Huntington Meadows, we used one year for design, one year for build. So we did the design work in '19, spent the money to do that, and then built in '20. So the question, and I would encourage us not to take any action tonight on what I would call the public requests, because, so this is the first time we're seeing the dollars and the cents. Mark, I just want to reiterate, Mark did not put these in any priority order. They're just on a list. And so there are going to be two components. Here in a couple of months, I'm going to be coming to you with the 2021 budget and asking you what your appetite is for the amount of sidewalks or the amount of money that you want to put in for sidewalks. That certainly will have, you know, a bearing on what we're able to do. And then the other ask will be, you know, from a priority standpoint, do you have a priority of these six areas, seven areas that Mark has identified? Do you have a priority for those areas? Because that will have an impact on the budget as well.
Tony, one of the things I would recommend to the new town board members that we've done in the past is take this list and take the opportunity to drive in the neighborhoods that have been identified, just so you get a feel of what the road is like. It's tough to get a feel of the traffic, but you can get a general sense of, you know, where maybe sidewalks are, could be a higher priority than in other areas before we go ahead and make a kind of a priority list, per se.
And then having support from the neighbors definitely helps.
Yeah.
As you've shared, everybody loves sidewalks, but oftentimes, people want to see another side of the street, or don't take down my tree, or unfortunately, you know, construction is construction, and, you know, we're going to make a little bit of a mess. So having a petition and having support from the neighbors that, you know, aren't all there for it, is definitely a huge help on Huntington Meadows to go in, and the neighbors are, "Yep, we're there. Oh, the tree's got to go. No problem. Great." You know, if you need ameasement, you know, that definitely makes our life a lot easier than.
And I was just, you're absolutely right, Mark. I was mentioning just a short while ago that five, seven, 10 years ago, nobody wanted sidewalks on their street, and that's when you had neighborhoods arguing against each other, neighbors arguing against each other and so forth. And now it seems like it's just kind of flipped a little bit, which is interesting, and that's perfectly fine, but. So I plan on driving through some of these neighborhoods that you've identified, and thank you for doing that, just to get a better feel before we have a discussion on priorities.
And if you need larger mapping, anything more detailed, obviously, this is at a townwide level and just kind of a broad brush stroke with a.
Right.
A highlighter, just to kind of give you a sense of the area, if you need, you know, additional mapping, obviously, please reach out, let us know.
So what I might suggest, because there is no, at least tonight, I think the only actionable item, but I'm not going to ask for an actual vote on, but the actionable item is just confirming the work that we're going to do this year, the work that's in green that Mark highlighted. We've got four locations, five locations that we're going to be looking at. So we've got some of the money from CBVG. We've got some money that we got set aside with Huntington Meadows, and we'll move forward with that and try to get those sidewalks in the ground, April, May, ideally, if we can do it. And then what I'd ask, Mark, for the other information, is that maybe in the June timeframe, end of May, early June, Mark, if you wouldn't mind putting this back on the agenda, because that'll be at a time when we're going to be working on the budget. And we want to identify, one, from a priority standpoint, and then, two, what is our appetite by way of dollars and cents for 2021? Both for potential sidewalk install and maybe in some case, maybe there's some sidewalk install and maybe there's some sidewalk design within a bill in '22.
And going on, what, just as a follow-up, Mr. Supervisor, I think it's just worth noting that looking at the potential list in 2021 or 2022, you're looking at sidewalk costs for a particular road up over $200,000. You know, there's two of them, one on Five Mile Line and potentially on Jackson Road, that the cost exceeds $200,000.
Right.
To put sidewalks on those areas. So this is not a cheap endeavor in any way you want to look at it.
We've broken it up before. I mean, I can look at, you know, if that's a priority area, Panorama Trail, I think that took us four or five years.
Yeah.
We kind of leapfrogged our way up the road and did what we could with our funds each year and kind of, you know, broke it up into chunks and, you know, it may not be a whole wall.
Right.
One year, one construction season, you know, it can be broken up if that's.
Yep.
Obviously more affordable.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Great. So let's bring it back, end of May, early June, Mark.
Yep.
That way, it'll give us plenty of time to talk about it for the budget for 2021. All right. There being no further business come before the board, the February 26, 2020 work session stands adjourned at 8:18 PM. Thank you for everyone that participated. Thank you to Sue for her minutes, and thanks to PCPTA.